Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome you to the Clayton County Board of Education Board Meeting today, September 5th, 2023. The time is 6:00 PM. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, but I'm going to let us stand and do the pledge first. So please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order by calling the row. Ms. Jasmine Bowles, District 1.
Present.
District 2, Mr. Mark Christmas.
Present.
District 3, Jessie Goree, that's me. District 4, Ms. Victoria Williams. District 5, Dr. Dee Haney.
Present.
District 6, Ms. Mary Baker.
Present.
District 7, Ms. Sabrina Hill.
Present.
District 8, Ms. Joy Taylor Cooper.
Present.
District 9, Mr. Benjamin Straker.
Present.
Dr. Anthony Smith, Superintendent.
Present.
Mr. Clem Doyle, Legal Counsel.
Present.
Ms. Kim Blackwood, Board Liaison. We actually have Dr. Rom Carter serving in that capacity this evening. Doc, Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Alicia Battle, Executive Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent and Board. Ms. Dawn Blowell, Executive Administrative Assistant to the Deputy of Clayton County Public Schools. Okay, so I want to start the meeting off. It's hard to come in and start the meeting off asking for a moment of silence. We lost a student on Saturday, Stefan Ford III, a Jonesboro High School student. So we want to take a moment of silent reflection for him and his family. So please let's do so at this time. Thank you. Thank you all. And before we continue with the meeting, I also would like to recognize some special guests that are in our midst. I want to recognize my, one of my City Council members, Mr. Cobb, from the city of Riverdale. I believe he's in, hello there, Mr. Cobb. Council member from the city of Riverdale. And I also would like to recognize one of my, I'm gonna say she's one of my sorority sisters, Ms. Nina Packer, who is the Managing Director of the Clayton County Public Schools Foundation. All right, so we are at the point where we're going to do some board recognitions. So board members, we can turn our name tags around and come on the floor and recognize some special people today.
Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Smith, ladies and gentlemen. It is my pleasure to present the recognitions for the month of September of 2023. For our first recognition, I would ask the following individuals to please come forward and join the board. Mr. Derek Manning, Dr. Pam Pitts, Mr. Harold, the Principal at Morrow High School, Colonel King, and Master Chief Sergeant or Master Sergeant Chief Robert Walker, if they would come forward, please. Thank you. I now ask the students who are here from Morrow High School and its AFJ ROTC unit if they would line up along the wall on the far side, along with Tech Sergeant Lanell Deloach Brewster. Tonight, Clayton County Public Schools recognizes the AFJ ROTC unit, that is the Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps Unit at Morrow High School for earning one of the highest honors given by national headquarters. The school has been awarded the Silver Star Community Service Award. This award. This award is bestowed upon AFJ ROTC units that rank in the top 5% nationally for community service to the nation and to the local community. Earning this award is a remarkable accomplishment. Morrow's unit totaled nearly 3,000 hours of community service. That's not bad. It should also be noted that this is the first ever Silver Star Community Service Award received by an AFJ ROTC unit in Clayton County Public Schools. Tonight, we also want to give, I'm gonna ask the young ladies and the sergeant if they would to move closer to the center, because tonight we give special recognition to Tech Sergeant Lanell Deloach Brewster for her exceptional leadership in guiding the unit to this recognition and to the unit's cadet key staff for its role in managing this undertaking. It now gives me a great deal of pleasure to let you know the people involved. Again, Technical Sergeant Lanell Deloach Brewster, then Cadet Ayala Verdel, Cadet Samuel Nguyen, Cadet Joyce Ramos, Cadet Devin Williams, Cadet Jordan Montez, Cadet Lillian Brown Mark, Cadet Cardesa Montalano, I knew I was gonna mess that one up, and Cadet Christina Lee. Can we all give just a big round of applause to these outstanding individuals? And now it's time for photographs. And before you walk away, if there are any parents or anyone out in the audience with these outstanding young people, please come on up. We'd love for you to join them for the photograph. Thank you very much. For our next recognition, I would ask Dr. Douglas Hendricks to please join the board up front. Earning a National Human Resources credential makes an HR professional a recognized expert and leader in the field. Increased credibility for the organization, along with personal development and career advancement are benefits to earning this certification. Five members of the district's Division of Human Resources Core Leadership Team now possesses National Human Resources Certification through the Society for Human Resources Management, or the HR Certification Institute. One of those members, Valerie Henderson, who is Director in Human Resources, has held national certification for a number of years. And she is now, I'm gonna ask her to come on up front and to be joined by the additional individuals who now hold this certification. Ale. Alicia Albretton, Chief Human Resources Officer. Elise Chandler, Manager, Substitute Management. Cherie Moore, Manager, Staffing. And Dr. Abe Tatum, Director of Human Resources. Do we have any family and friends who would like to join for a photograph up front? Please come forward at this time. Don't all rush. For our next recognition, I would ask Ms. Angela Odom, if she would please come forward. And for this presentation, while she's being greeted by everyone, I'll turn the mic over to Ms. Goree.
Get right here, ma'am. It's my honor to recognize, I'm gonna say another, one of my sorority sisters. Ms. Angela Oden. This year, we had one of the most fantastic opportunities. Ms. Angela Oden is the civilian, let me get it right. Advocate, no, is that wrong? Tell me, tell me.
Civilian aide to the Secretary of the Army for Georgia North.
Civilian aide, excuse me, I need to get that right, to the Secretary of the Army. So she called me and she said the Secretary of the Army is going to be in the Atlanta area and she would like to attend the graduation. And I said, well, she said, well, I'm gonna give you a call first. And I said, but of course, come to Clayton County Public Schools. So it was Mount Zion High School and also Forest Park High School that had the honor and privilege of getting words from the Secretary of the Army. So I'm giving her this certificate for her, for achievement, but I want to give her a plaque, because it's such a prestigious honor for our students, for her to thank enough of us, for the Secretary of the Army to come. So on behalf, Clayton County Board of Education, for the Outstanding Service Award presented to Angela Oden, in appreciation of your years of dedicated service and continued support to the students and staff of Clayton County Public Schools, by the Clayton County Board of Education, Ms. Jessie Goree Chair, Mr. Benjamin Straker, Vice Chair, Ms. Mary Baker, Ms. Jasmine Bowles, Mr. Mark Christmas, Dr. Deitrich D. Haney, Ms. Sabrina Hill, Ms. Joy Taylor Cooper, Ms. Victoria Williams, and Dr. Anthony W. Smith, Superintendent on September 5th, 2023. Not only is it for this award, for her having the Secretary of the Army, her son also graduated from Clayton County Public Schools this year. Now, he didn't come to the Morrow High School graduation, so that just shows you, you know, her appreciation. She has worked tirelessly for, from Social Action Committee Chair for Delta Sigma Theta Sororities Incorporated, East Point College Park Chapter, the best chapter in the whole wide world. So she is an advocate for our children, and I just could not pass up this opportunity to give her this recognition. She is also lives in Ms. Joy Taylor Cooper's district. So on behalf of the Board of Education, this is for you. All right, I know we got some EPCP people in the, let's stand up and recognize, I saw her here. Come on, family members, that means sisters, sorority sisters, come on up. Family members, any fam? Everybody look up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sweetheart. Don't y'all leave though, don't leave. We got one more. One more, Mr. What? Oh, excuse me, don't. Excuse me.
Well, Sean came up too, okay.
All right, some of you, I probably should've stayed on up here. We have another, did you want to start off or what? Okay, we have another special guest that's in the audience. That is Ms. Jamel Miller Brown. Come on up. Y'all give her a standing ovation now, come on. That's right, we gonna, go down there and shake everybody's hand, shake everybody's hands. While she's shaking hands, we must acknowledge Ms. Jamel Miller Brown. I just call her Miller Brown. She has been my principal at Riverdale High School for the longest, and she received a promotion this year, but then she had to, she had to end up retiring. And as we've done for all of our other principals, come on back here in the middle, we have given a service award and we've given a proclamation. So I'm gonna first read this from Clayton County Public Schools. It says, Clayton County Board of Education, Outstanding Service Award presented to Jamel Miller Brown, in appreciation of your years of dedicated service and continued support to the students and staff of Clayton County Public Schools by the Clayton County Board of Education, Ms. Jessie Goree Chair, Mr. Benjamin Straker, Vice Chair, Ms. Mary Baker, Ms. Jasmine Bowles, Mr. Mark Christmas, Dr. Deitrich, excuse me, Deitrich D. Haney, Ms. Sabrina Hill, Ms. Joy Taylor Cooper, Ms. Victoria Williams, and Dr. Anthony W. Smith, Superintendent on September 5th, 2023. So this is for your service, outstanding service, competitive principal. Somebody that I love, because you know, I always tease everybody about these high schools, you know, we got these two little private schools, but we got some real schools. And with the real schools, this lady right here is a competitor, and most of the time she had, she was number one, and I don't think any, any school yet has had more dual-enrolled students, more associate degrees than Riverdale High School. So we want to commend her for that. And then we have a proclamation, and I'm gonna read all of this tonight, maybe I need to do some choral reading. Okay. The Clayton County Board of Education takes great pride in honoring Ms. Jamel Miller Brown upon her retirement, celebrating a career of outstanding service and extraordinary achievement as an educator. And whereas Ms. Jamel Miller Brown has been an enthusiastic and devoted educator for over 29 years, spending the last 16 years with Clayton County Public Schools, she has held the positions of Teacher, Counselor, Assistant Principal, and Principal. She holds degrees from Georgia State University, State University of West Georgia, and Arkansas University. And whereas Ms. Jamel Miller Brown served as the Principal of Forest Park Middle School in 2007, and began serving as Principal of Riverdale High School in 2012, working tirelessly to cultivate a great environment for both learning and teaching, she forged positive and supportive relationships with community leaders and other organizations at both schools to ensure our students receive the quality education they deserve. And through her focused leadership during her tenure, Ms. Jamel Miller Brown improved the four-year cohort graduation rate for Riverdale High School by 40-plus percentage points, guiding the school to finish above the state graduation rate each year since 2019, improving the school's performance on the Career College Ready Performance Index. And through her engaged leadership style and successful track record of working with students from across the ethnic, ability, and socioeconomic spectrum, Ms. Jamel Miller Brown has been able to provide robust support in achieving positive educational outcomes designed to meet the diverse needs of all students in her care. And under her able leadership and guidance, Ms. Jamel Miller Brown has supported many teachers and staff to school and district leadership positions where they continue to consult her expertise in the areas of secondary education and administrative policies. And throughout her tenure, Ms. Jamel Miller Brown has served as an excellent example and mentor to colleagues, teachers, and administrators alike, inspiring them all with her dedicated advocacy for the best interests of her students and employees. And Ms. Jamel Miller Brown can be proud of the tremendous impact she has had, for her legacy will continue to resonate, not only within the walls of Riverdale High School, but also within the minds of students, parents, teachers, and alumni throughout Clayton County. She has enriched our school district with her service, and she is worthy of our esteem and appreciation. Now therefore, be it known, the Clayton County Board of Education gratefully and respectfully honors Ms. Jamel Miller Brown for her enduring service and leadership to Riverdale High School and Clayton County Public Schools, and wishes her continued success and happiness throughout her retirement, presented this 5th day of September in the year 2023. From Jessie Goree, District 3, Mark Christmas, District 2, Mary Baker, District 6, Mr. Benjamin Straker, Vice Chair, District 9, Ms. Victoria Williams, District 4, Ms. Sabrina Hill, District 7, Ms. Jasmine Bowles, District 1, Dr. Deitrich Haney, District 5, Joy Taylor Cooper, District 8, and Dr. Anthony W. Smith, the Superintendent and CEO of Schools. There you go, Ms. Miller Brown. She says her makeup is too pretty, so we're gonna get this picture. All right, we're not done. Come on up, family. Let's get the family first, then we gonna bring the sororous back up one more time. Look like all the families here, tell us who's here.
Thank you, everybody. I'm so appreciative, and by the grace of God, I've ended a 30-year career, so thank you so much for this acknowledgement. And this is my wonderful family, my support system. And you all know me, so you know, my husband probably needs the award more than me, for dealing with me through 30 years of education. So my girlfriends, this is. So my girlfriends, this is just my, this is my village. So thank you so much for supporting me.
All right, you get in front, get, family get in front of us, step up. You can get on in the front. Come on, come on, Mr. Brown. I have all the phone numbers for everybody up here when I need something. Come on, come on over here. Come on, Ricardo. That's her chat, they being high school sweethearts and all of that. Come on over. All right. All right, calling out deltas to the floor. Come on deltas, come on back up here one more time. Bring the sisters up here. Come back, ma'am. Come on. Let's get the sisters back up here one more time, come on. I think that's it. Say, G says. Miller Brown.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, you all, we've had a whole sorority meeting in here. So we're gonna, I'm gonna go to the ethics statement and then we'll have public participation. The ethics statement states, in accordance, in accordance with Board Policy B H, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of such conflicts. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict with respect to any matter scheduled to come before the board at this meeting or appearing on our proposed agenda? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict and refrain from participation in the matter involved. The next item on the agenda is public participation. Let me read the rules. The Clayton County Board of Education welcomes public participation and will hear any interested individual pursuant to the guidelines outlined in Policy B C B I. Members of the public will not be allowed to discuss individual personnel issues or confidential student matters. Speakers must identify themselves and topics before speaking. Speakers will be given three minutes to speak and time may not be yielded from one speaker to another. Board members will not respond to comments from speakers. The chairperson may respond as appropriate. Issues requiring possible action by the board may be added to a future agenda. Issues that may need to be addressed by the administration will be duly noted. Abusive language and our personal attacks will not be permitted. Individuals addressing the board must at all times adhere to the civility policy. All right, we have one individual that signed up for public participation, Ms. Linda G. Jones. Ms. Linda Jones, are you here? Come on up, Ms. Jones.
Good afternoon, my name is Linda G. Jones and I have here with me Ms. Calotta Brown. We are in a senior organization and we are very supportive.
I need you to start all over, get closer to the mic so we can hear you, okay?
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
My name is Linda G. Jones and this is Calotta Brown. And we are members of a seniors group. We are very supportive of the activities in the school system and we just want you to know who we are. We have less than 10 members at this time. I'm the founder and the president of the group. Uh, and we have people that, from ages 50 to 80 at this point. We're not a 501(c)(7), but a social club with genuine ways of doing things. We're active, positive, and have a sharing mindset. Over the last five beginning school years in Clayton County, we have donated to several elementary schools. Suda Elementary, Church Street Elementary, Smith Elementary, Anderson Elementary last year, where Dr. Beasley dropped by the school to acknowledge and share our support. Also, this year, our theme was Community for the Children. I reached out to family, friends, neighbors, and businesses. Other members of the groups also shared their support as well. We're very pleased with the success of this theme. The children is the focus of our August Community Give Back Event and we will continue this concept. I have here copies of our newsletter that I prepared. I'm not an expert at this, but I did want you all to see some of the things that we are doing in the community for the children in Clayton County. So who can I give this to so that everybody gets a copy? We want you Clayton County Board of Education to know that senior citizens in surrounding communities also feel a need to encourage, motivate, and inspire our future generations. We appreciate what you're doing and know that, and we want you to know that we are supportive. And we hope that we will be included in the myriad of activities that you sponsor and not reject us. We invite you to come to our meeting on next, tomorrow as a matter of fact, tomorrow at 11:30 at the Red Lobster on Tar Boulevard. Uh, that's where we have our regular meeting and if you are available, we would love to see one of you, or some of you, or all of you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Ms. Jones, I want to connect you, is Ms. Rice in the audience? I, I want to connect you with Ms. Rice. So I think I have your information, but you have mine, so make sense. Oh, well, she's on your advisory council, that's right, on Mr. Striker. Okay, we have your information, we want you to connect. Thank you so much, okay? That is all that we have for public participation. At this time, we need to, we have some recommendations from Executive Session where we discuss Personnel Matters and Personnel Tribunal. So I need a motion for the Tribunal 2023-2024-01. Ms. Baker.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the findings for the tribunal hearing for 2023-2024-01.
All right, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second? Ms. Williams.
I second it.
All right, it's been moved improperly second that we uphold the recommendations for Tribunal 2023-2024-01. Please vote. All right, and the vote is eight in favor and one abstention. So Ms., Ms. Battle, everyone except me voted in support, I'm abstaining from the vote. Okay, thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda are announcements from our Vice Chair, Mr. Striker.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, district administrators, and citizens of Clayton County. Here are the announcements for the month of September. September is National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, National Sickle Cell Awareness Month, and National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. It is also home to Patriot's Day and will, and we will observe Grandparents' Day on the 10th and U.S. Constitution Day on the 17th. A series of orientation sessions have been established for students and their families on the following schedule. Elementary school sessions will take place on Thursday, September 7th. Middle school sessions will take place on Thursday, September 14th, and high school sessions will take place on Thursday, September 21st. All orientation sessions will begin at 5:00 PM and continue to 7:00 PM. The district will observe Hispanic Heritage Month, beginning Thursday, September 15th, and continuing through Saturday, October 15th. The theme of this year's observance is Todos Somos, Somos Uno. We are all, we are one. Numerous activities have been scheduled throughout the district in recognition of this event. One such event will take place at the Performing Arts Center on Wednesday, September 20th, as the district's 8th grade World Language, Languages students will be treated to a Hispanic Heritage Celebration Concert as presented by Stillwell School of the, of the Arts. The concert is set to begin at 10:45 AM. Parents are invited to attend a Visual School Choice Magnet Fair on Saturday, September 16th. Elementary programs will be the focus at 9:00 AM, middle school programs at 10:00 AM, and high school programs at 11:00 AM. The Virtual School Choice Magnet Fair is designed to provide important information to parents and guardians about the district's school choice and magnet programs. The fair will also serve as a meet and greet opportunity to engage with schools and program administrators and teachers. Those interested in attending should pre-register on the district's website on, or Facebook page. The Superintendent's Blueprint Series Tour continues on Tuesday, September 19th at Drew High School in Riverdale. The informative session will begin at 6:00 PM. Superintendent, CEO of Schools, Dr. Anthony W. Smith, will be recognized as the recipient of the 2023 Torch Award Honoree at 13th Annual Rice Awards on September, on Saturday, September 23rd at the Moral Center in Clayton County. The awards are presented to individuals who demonstrate keen awareness about community needs and work to make things better. The September Board Work Session is scheduled for Monday, September 25th in the boardroom of the District Administration Complex. The meeting will begin at 6:00 PM. The October Board Meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 2nd. In the boardroom of the District's Administration Complex, the meeting will begin at 6:00 PM. Madam Chair, that concludes tonight's announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Striker. All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. We have the minutes from the Board Work Sessions, July 31st, 2023. Do we have any additions, corrections, deletions? Seeing none, we will, we will accept them as presented. We also have the minutes from the Board Meeting, August 7th, 2023. Again, do we have any additions, corrections, deletions, anything as far as minutes are concerned? Seeing none, we will accept those minutes as presented. The next item on the agenda.
Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the Board, colleagues, and community members, we have an update from our Student Support Services Division. Dr. Angela Cayer.
Good evening, Ms. Cayer.
Good evening, good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the Board, our Superintendent and CEO, Dr. Smith, and to the community at large. On behalf of Student Support Services, I'd like to present you with a few wellness updates on today. And if you would go to the next slide, this update, thank you so much. Our update tonight is centered around strategic goal number three, which is to, to create an equitable and safe environment that promotes active engagement, communication, accountability, and collaboration of all stakeholders to maximize student achievement. Our updates tonight, as we move into the fall season around flu, cold season, we'd like to share information from the district as it relate to contagious disease reporting. A contagious disease is a disease that spreads rapidly from person to person, either indirect or directly, or through droplets. So in examples of some of the diseases, it's not only COVID-19, but also flu, strep throat, stomach viruses, conjunctivitis, and measles. So the district's approach this year is for us to address contagious diseases to make sure that we maintain a healthy and well environment for all employees and students. So in so doing, we have a process that includes parents, guardians, and employees, self-reporting to our contagious disease portal. Once reporting to the portal, our health services staff will consult each case and provide a written notification to the school or the department head around, related to that reporting from either a scholar or from an employee. To ensure that our environment, or we maintain a continuity and instruction during a period of isolation for our scholars and our employees, we first of all recommend that they self-isolate. As they are consulted with by our health services staff based on medical guidance on the days that they began their symptoms or tested positive, they will be directed to self-isolate. And when returning to the work or school environment, to wear a tightly fitted mask. To, again, to maintain continuity and instruction and to support our students during that time, their attendance will be marked as isolation, which is an I S O code. When a student is out beyond those five days, they will be referred to our virtual support temporary program and their attendance will be coded Life Event Virtual, which is the L E V code. Employees will enter their absence as sick leave. To ensure that we maintain this safe environment, we continue to push these key mitigation strategies. Number one, if you're sick, stay away from school, stay away from work. The big piece is the hand washing and sanitizing is a big key. And two, if you're coughing, sneezing, you have a runny nose, is to consider wearing a face covering. And if you have a fever, sore throat, fatigue, headache, muscle ache, you might want to consider getting a flu or a COVID test. The flu shot- The flu shot is also an option for those individuals, and also, the COVID vaccine is a key mitigation piece. When we talk about other mitigation strategies for the district, the district has partnered with Core to offer the vaccine. The vaccine was offered this past Friday, on September 1st. It will continue to be offered throughout the month of September. We have a vaccine coming up on the 7th that will be at Central Office South. We will offer the vaccine again on the 12th, at the Professional Learning Center, and again at Central Office South on the 15th. We will offer an opportunity for all stakeholders and students on what we call a Super Saturday, which will be on September 23rd. During that time, our key partners of Core will offer a vaccine, a $50 gift card to those taking the vaccine. We have sponsorships from Community Teen Coalition and Krogers to offer groceries, and as well as Kimberly Clark will be giving away paper products. So again, these are some of our key strategies. We will also be offering flu clinics as we move into the fall. Dr. Smith, that concludes our updates at this time. I'll be happy to answer any additional questions.
Ms. Baker.
I saw there that you were talking about self-reporting. How did the parents get this information of who to call? Or, I mean, are they just calling the school? Are they calling a special number? How were you getting that information?
Self-reporting, they can always call the school, and they will be directed, there is a link on a district's website that is called Contagious Disease Reporting. It is there on our main site, as well as on the student health site. And also, our healthcare techs in our schools can help direct them on that self-reporting. That is so important. Thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. Cayer, I want to thank you and your team for the support that you all gave to Jonesboro High School today. I think I see the counselor from...
The counselor?
The counselor, Jonesboro High School. Are there any individuals other?
I think I saw the counselor. Everybody else is probably doing a little bit of self-care.
All of the Jonesboro High School.
Yeah, Jonesboro High School.
Please just stand up. I want to recognize you all, and thank you all for the support. And I'm particularly proud of the counselor, because it just happens to be my goddaughter, Dr. Reynolds. All right, thank you all so much. And Dr. Mail, I mean Reverend Mail, if he's looking, I want to thank him for leading the charge today. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda for action, which includes the Georgia DOE Fiscal Year 25 Application, Financial Report, Fiscal Year 2021 Annual Audit Report, Cell Phone Tower Lease, SPOS Revenue Report, Purchasing Report, SPOS Construction Report, Personnel Changes Report. Do I have a motion? Or do we need to pull anything out? Ms. Baker.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as stated.
All right. Ms. Cooper?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved improperly second that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Please vote. All right, Mr. Christmas, is that you abstaining? Okay, we have eight in favor and one abstention. All right. The next item on the agenda is Policy Series G. We're voting on Policy Series G. Are we ready to vote? Or do we have any discussion? All right, I need a motion for Policy Series G. Ms. Williams.
My discussion was that we accept everything.
Well, yes, that's what I'm asking. Do we have any discussion?
Yes.
You want to discuss?
The email I sent in with the two years, versus the one year for the employee to be at the location.
All right, let's pull that up. I'm gonna clear the board, so we can discuss, and then I'll take a motion again. All right, Ms. Williams, tell me exactly the, what you... Because, you know, I've had that discussion before myself in regards to, you're talking about in regards to the transfer?
Yes, for the teachers having to wait two years at one location versus the one year.
You want to change that to one year?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cooper, are you making a motion, or you have? Okay. All right, so Mr. Dr. Smith, do you have any thing to say?
One year with the condition that is with the approval of the incoming principal.
Is that, is that a good compromise, Ms. Williams?
Incoming principal?
As long as the person that they're seeking to transfer to is approved by that particular principal.
All right. So I'm trying to see who has that. Mr. Doyle, are you writing that? Or who was, who handles? You have it, Ms. Garrett? Okay, she has it. All right. So, do we have any other discussion? Are we ready for a motion? So, Ms. Baker. All right, I need a second. Ms. Cooper?
Second.
All right, it's been moved improperly second that we accept the G policies as discussed. Please vote. All right, we have eight in favor, one in opposition. Can you see the votes, Ms.? Okay. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is Policy Series M. I need a motion for Policy Series M. Well, I'm just, we have both, I don't think it's... All right, Mr. Christmas.
So moved, Madam Chair.
All right, I need a second, please. Ms. Williams.
I second it.
It's been moved improperly second that we accept the Policies, Policy Series M as presented. Please vote. All right, and it's a unanimous vote? All right, the last item on the agenda is the resolution for the Villas at Mount Zion Development. Ms. Garrett, did you want to come forth and say anything?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Anthony Smith, Superintendent, members of the community at large. We present to you this evening a request for the Board to approve the resolution for the Villas at Mount Zion Development. As you can see, the original agreement, the partnership between the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Education, as well as the Housing Authority of Clayton County, was signed in 2021. We're presenting an updated agreement this evening due to a change in the distributions, and also a structural change for the Housing Authority of Clayton County. There is a very insignificant difference in the amount that the districts, that the foundation, the Clayton County Foundation will receive. So tonight, the recommendation and request is that we sign that resolution so we can continue that partnership with those Villas. And they are actually located, if you are where they're located, right near the Mount Zion Elementary and Mount Zion Primary Schools. Very beautiful, and we do hope that we'll bring the same developments in other ways as well.
All right, is there any discussion? Ms. Bowles?
It's about $6,000. Very, very inconsequential.
Did you want to discuss it? Did you, Dr. Smith?
No discussion unless there's some question.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, I need a motion for us to approve the resolution for the Villas at Mount Zion Development. Mr. Christmas?
So moved, Madam Chair.
I need a second. Mr. Striker?
I second the motion, Madam Chair.
It's been moved improperly second that we accept the resolution. Dr. Haney? All right, it's unanimous vote.
Thank you for your support. Good evening.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm looking at the agenda, and it looks like you've gotten through everything.
We have concluded the agenda. Thank you all for your attendance. We're in adjournment.